This is the Planning Board Subcommittee on Grafting Stormwater Management Ordinance for the town. We're meeting on September 24th at 7:00 PM. I just want to say initially, can we try to keep meeting for an hour tonight? And can we try and work a little better at just having one person talking at the back? Just for that. Yours first.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions about the stuff that we've already talked about? Maybe this kind of thing. Oh, and by the way, we don't have microphones at the table tonight, so a little clarity of speech would probably be appreciated from the folks at home.
Is the pickup on you?
Yeah.
Where is the pickup?
Back in here.
Oh, it's on camera.
Okay, where we left off, I don't recall exactly where we left off, but what we were doing was sort of reviewing notable, I think, things that I thought were worth mentioning on the, what I call, melded document, the document that has had a preliminary meld into the current ordinance. And if anybody actually has a clear idea about where we were at the time, I think we might have been...
We went through the whole thing, but you did have a couple more points you wanted to bring up, because we didn't quite get to them.
Okay, that actually might be around here. And I thought I had, where the heck had we numbered the pages? Because this thing I'm looking at now, which is the... Oh! After condensation, so... Did it go back? Yeah, I did it before. Yeah, whole 12 business. I hope I didn't somehow manage to... I don't seem to. Hold the book. All right, so this is the ordinance itself. Before condensation, February 2nd, we have before condensation July 6th. And if I don't have it, I have no idea.
There's something on there, watching inside, checking them down.
These are all chapter 500 things. I can no doubt wing it, but that's kind of a shame. Is there another one that I'm missing?
I did note some of the places that you definitely had some conversation last time.
That's just a significant bummer. It's gotta be here. It's gotta be here. FB proposal before condensation. It doesn't have the 525-2 stuff, but yeah, I can, other than whatever notes I may have put into it, it's really just this. No? Nope? So I think it just sort of evaporated or flowed away with the storm. So I'm gonna use, I'll use this one, which is the thing that pulled it in. And I remain somewhat perplexed about where it went, but there it is. Okay. So that said, we go down to, so would it be reasonable for me to not repeatedly say 525-2, blah, 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 blah? I'll just sort of...
Page in section.
Because that's, you know, right now, that's what I have. And actually, that's a good point. So let me just number these, so I'll be more or less close to you guys' page. But there's that front thing. I think I got like 15?
Yeah. We have not had a BEP finished yet. I guess I would have called it. I will try to make a part of comment later. Try tomorrow morning, see.
Okay, and that's strictly for the purpose of potentially seeing if we're gonna, if the planning board is going to try to shoot for something broader than just the three zones in town, correct?
We have been getting feedback from the school with our initial meeting that that's what they would propose, they would like us to do that.
Okay, once again, I'm 15.
And also, there was some requirement that we were gonna get help in getting our hands around how and why to use that, the whole phosphorus allocation thing. But that, we've kind of, with your help, we don't need to make a rocket science project on that anymore, I don't think. We just have to have enough knowledge about it as to feel comfortable requiring it, understanding what it does for a certain threshold of activity, as I understand it anyway.
Right.
We will, I'm hoping, get a better sense of how, there's a lady by the name of Teresa Galvin, who is Joey Anderson's replacement now as York County Sub-Orch. And she does use it in a simplified manner, brought some of the things that Kenny mixed with her. We were hoping to get an explanation.
Well, certainly if the board chooses to try to shoot for the whole town rather than the three zones, I, for one, would certainly suggest that that be a second article, which could easily be plugged in to broaden the effect of the one article, just so there's not a... Less to hang your hat on in terms of saying, "Hey, I don't like that."
Could we withhold judgment on that until we receive some more feedback from the folks?
Yeah. Still kind of early stages in that, I think, so... I don't think it would necessarily impact the timing of any of this other stuff that we're doing now. In other words, it would be simple enough to do to a small section of what we're talking about, so... Yeah, I don't know. That's just very strange. All right, so we go down to, and I may...
Have you gotten it put in there?
Hmm, I don't think so. This is just the whole ordinance. No, and it is... Good. Moving on. Okay, and we did talk about, I believe, that any of the, or largely the focus when we're talking about comparison of flows, we're talking about pre-development versus proposed. Well, the one I'm looking at at the moment is page 7, which is the BNP's in Section 2.3. And you guys will look at the left, the far right-hand side of your section numbers with the permanent stormwater management goals. So number 2, pre-development peak flow rate. So there is mention of that here and there, and also when we're, you know, when these calculations are gonna be requested under certain circumstances of the homeowner or their hired hand to, you know, the professional help to do this, however it turns out, we are comparing pre-development to proposed. And understanding that depending on the level of development now, we may be talking about comparing something that was present in the past with what we're proposing to do. And I'm pretty sure that that's understood here, correct?
Yeah.
And also talking about...
When they use the phrase natural pre-development peak flow, I think it would allude to the site previous to occupation. You know, it's natural state.
And folks need to know that depending on what has happened on that property, since it was undeveloped, that's kind of what we're shooting for in this clause, that we're trying to bring it back to, you know, rewind, as it were, things that may have happened to it that were not so desirable in terms of flow, of capture of contaminants, et cetera. Okay. Oh, yeah, and part of that discussion is, I think I got a little balled up in the definition of redevelopment. So if I go look at the page 8, 312 redevelopment, and then kind of keeping a finger in that, looking at the glossary where it talks about redevelopment, "Any construction alteration or transportation-related improvement where the existing land is commercial, industrial, institutional, or multifamily residential, admitting any mention of square foot area from main LID guidance manual, appendix C3." That last sentence almost looks like it's some editorial direction, so we're gonna have to shoot it. Talk about that, I think. The original citation was in the redevelopment in 312 at the bottom of page 8 on mine. It might be slightly different on yours.
Redevelopment's page 9.
Page 9, okay. So maybe probably to the top, page 9. So if I assume that everything pushes down maybe two or three inches, I think I'll probably be...
Yeah, we should be pretty soon.
Yeah. What we're reading is the same stuff, largely. What was your... So I was, and I don't know if this is correct or not, but I was sort of, when we were talking about pre-development state versus proposed, proposal for development or proposal for the change or whatever is going through the CEO's office, somewhat naturally, it seemed that understanding what redevelopment means to this ordinance would be important to that, but it turns out that redevelopment, that word as used in here, means something very specific, that is not really residential per se. It's multifamily and it's commercial. So I guess I just need to know to not try, you know, to not bring that word into consideration of the pre-development versus proposed level of development.
What page is the phosphorus down?
Down here at the beginning. I have it in the middle of the first page, so you probably at the top of page 2 maybe, or bottom of page 1?
Definitions, definitions, bottom of the one.
Okay. Back for using the... The word that was in the back of my head, but this doesn't happen to be what's printed on the page, which is definitions. All right, so... One thing, and I think I'm coming up on it, is that was, is really good in the Forest Bell thing that I folded in, is, and what was missing in the spring consideration is the footnotes, where it talks about, you know, there's a citation for, "Go to this state document, do something substantially similar to that, those are things you can do." So there are footnotes that actually help to direct the user properly to the documents in question. And there's also a section in here that has, I think, maybe a third of a page or a half of a page that lists the different publications and what they're generally used for. Let's see, I think that's about halfway through. So one of the things that I wanted to get done tonight, other than finishing up this review, and I guess I'll keep from getting too off track here, once we get through this review, what I'd like to do is start working on the citations. So every word talks about, you know, use this document, you can go to that document and see what parts of it we would like to use to say, "Go to that document, Chapter 5," or "Chapters 5 and 6," or whatever. So they're not gonna be going to the end and looking at the application forms, they're not gonna be going to that chapter, which is not what this thing's talking about. It's just gonna focus tightly enough to encompass the meaning of why they're being directed there, but not so loosely that it's just gonna, you know, or excuse me, not so tight that it's gonna be overly strict. So basically saying, "This document," like it's doing now, "but this section of this document," or "these sections," so that it's very clear what the author intends the user to get out of that document. Because one of the problems that I was having when talking with the planning board in the spring, when I was, you know, doing the Warren Finance Review, is, "Okay, we're gonna find these documents and then making, basically quoting from this out of the other, what is happening in that document?" And, you know, what was coming back was, "Oh no, that's not part of what this is all about." But, so it was too broad, so needs to be nailed down a little bit. On Section 313, just something I underlined here. Oh, okay, so we're definitely in the section that we haven't reviewed yet.
Is that impaired water bodies or high-quality water?
Actually, should we back up one more page? Because I think I just found where we kind of left off. Because I know we haven't talked about this. So in, I have page 8, maybe you've got it in the bottom of page 8, just above the redevelopment section we were talking about?
Yeah. What number?
Number 8.
Number 8, that would be the top of page 9 for us, yeah.
So that's talking about sizing and design and infiltration recharge BNP's?
Yeah, first and then page 9.
Okay, so, okay. Then the one I'm talking about is right above it, because those two are actually in subscripts. Okay, the LED guidance manual, the main stormwater practices manual. What is missing in this later version of Forest Bell compared to the earlier one is it talks about the New Hampshire Stream Crossing Guidelines in number 7. So in both cases, they're talking about it, but in this later version, somehow the footnote is gone. So it peripherally talks about it, that you can use these to comply with certain standards, but there's, it doesn't get the treatment that these other publications do. There's no footnote anymore or other reference to this publication. So my proposal is that either this reference be stricken, because we no longer care about it, or we restore the reference materials that were in the earlier version, so if somebody wanted to refer to it, they could do so.
So we should look in FB and...
Yeah, look at your earlier version of Forest Bell. And I think it's a different date than mine, but it probably has what we're talking about here. Yes, so mine is July 2011. And it's on page 9. And there's that New Hampshire Stream Crossing Guidelines superscript 4. And right at the bottom of the page, it talks about New Hampshire Stream Crossing Guidelines, University of New Hampshire, May 2009, and it's got a URL where you can find it.
Yeah, great.
And that's missing in this version.
Page 11 in the original FB. I would suggest we strike the reference to New Hampshire, not that...
Yeah, I think that's what we meant to do originally. Vaguely recall that we decided to not refer to New Hampshire.
That makes sense.
See, when we were first writing this, this was gonna apply to us and to Wakefield, so it was gonna cross borders, but then we ended up having to do separate ordinance.
Okay, so where it says, "For the New Hampshire Stream Crossing Guidelines," that's gonna go away.
I would suggest everybody on board, yeah?
Yeah.
And interestingly, and then right after that, it says, "And state law." So if you're in New Hampshire, I assume that means the state of New Hampshire, and if you're in Maine, I assume that means the state of Maine. On the same document, which could...
So we'll leave state law in Maine.
Which could admittedly be confusing, but yeah, I mean, so now it's talking about in the Maine Erosion and Sediment Control BNP Manual and state law. And it's not, you know, it's not ambiguous knowing which state they're talking about, because it just referenced a Maine document, and here we are in Maine, so I think we're good there. I don't think we're making any difference.
Tracing with all states.
Let's put it that way. Okay, so, okay, so moving on to largely the same section, oh, excuse me, redevelopment. So scan forward about a page to redevelopment. And I confess to being confused about what in heck they're saying here. Number 3, for redevelopment sites, blah, 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 and there's A, B, and C under it. Right above the impaired water bodies or high-quality waters. We get the right, or have commonplace here? In A, I have a big fat question mark to the left of A. I'm hoping it's just how I'm thinking about what they're saying, but it doesn't make any sense to me. So it reads as follows. "Implement measures on-site that result in effective impervious area," I don't know what that is, "of at least 30% of the existing impervious surfaces and pavement areas, and 50% of the additional proposed impervious surfaces and pavement areas through the application of forest media." So we're trying to get at least 30% of existing impervious surfaces, so let's just say we've got 1,000 square feet of paving. And we're trying to put measures in that result in an effective impervious area of at least 30%, and more if you can do it, of that 1,000 square feet. So what does that mean? Does that mean 30% of that area is, has some treatment that reduces the total impervious area? I'm not clear what it's trying to say.
I would say that the whole thousand would be treated to bring it down to an effective impervious of 700 or less.
Effective impervious area. So, okay, so... If I'm looking at this and thinking about it the way I think it means, I think that they, that lower is better. That if my effective impervious area is less than a certain percentage of the total impervious area, I mean, that makes sense to me. So I start with 1,000 square feet, I put in some remediation, and I end up with an effective impervious area of, say, 700 square feet, right? And the more remediation I do, the lower the effective impervious area is, and that's better. So where this is saying, "at least," normally when I see the phrase "at least," it usually means this amount or higher, but I think what it means to say is this amount or lower. That the effective impervious area should be no more than 70% of the existing impervious area. The raw impervious area, the starting impervious area. I want to remediate that down so that the effective impervious area is no more than 70% of the current impervious area. I think that's what it's saying, but I don't know. And I think, you know, if you apply whatever that same logic is to the second piece of that paragraph, but in my mind, you know, I just need to understand what it's supposed to mean before I can figure out how to craft it to perhaps make more sense. So maybe, I don't think C has the same problem.
An area equals or greater than 50%.
Yeah, and C is okay, I think that's phrased appropriately. It's talking about adequate water quality treatment for an area equal to or greater than 50% of redeveloped areas, or redevelopment areas. Although, when they say redevelopment areas, are they talking about the definition in this document? So it only applies to commercial and multifamily, whatever? Quite possibly, you know, off-site BNP's, that's kind of a, that's kind of a commercial thing. That's not something that's seen at home.
C is probably directed toward those types of sites.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah. Whereas A and B would be more directed toward our type of sites.
Yeah, I mean, C sounds like, even if they didn't use the word redevelopment, the type of thing that they're talking about, about mediation or mediation of and treatment of stuff off-site, I mean, that sounds like a plant, you know, piping and stuff, active treatment and that kind of thing.
I think so, B too.
So, you know, I think that's what C is aimed at, but A is, I'm a bit stymied. So I think, my proposal where it says, "Of at least," I would think that you take that percentage, subtract it from 100 to have the inverse, and say something like, "No more than." So, "Implement measures on-site that result in effective impervious area of no more than 70% of the existing impervious surfaces and pavement areas, and 50% of the additional proposed impervious surfaces and pavement areas through the application of forest media." So you can see that...
So you want to reduce by 30%?
Yes, the effective impervious area is the total.
So you're taking the existing and you're saying, right up front, it's gonna be 30%, whatever's existing now.
30% reduction.
30% reduction, yeah.
To, because the...
At least is deceiving, that word.
Yeah, and the 30%, because the effective impervious area is...
Whatever is additional is 50% of that.
Is the gross of impervious area minus the treatment to effectively give you what you're getting because you're treating. So what I think this is saying is that the effective impervious area, with this language, would be at the 70% mark. It would be 70% of what the gross impervious area was. So somehow or other, this, you know, these few words in this sentence need to be played with to reflect what I think it's talking about.
Going along with your thinking on this, I'm still trying to get my brain around disconnected impervious cover.
Yes, yes, I was a bit stymied on that. Well, I asked...
Should we go back to the glossary for a second and look at those again?
Sure.
Going along with your thinking on that, I think you may want to say something like, rather than "no greater than," what about at a minimum of 70%?
Well, we don't want it to be a minimum of, we want the reduction of at least 30%.
But it can be great, it can be greater than the effective area that is remediated can be. The inverse of that, when they say, "Of at least 30%," you were contending with men that they were gonna be treating 70%?
No, just the reverse. I think this is saying that you have to reduce your gross impervious surfaces by at least, or... Okay, so start off with no treatment, okay? So no treatment, our effective impervious area is all of the impervious area, no treatment, right? So it's 100%, okay? So the goal here, I think, is to reduce that by at least 30%, and that might be sort of what it's talking about here, this at least 30% business. They would like to reduce the effective impervious area by at least 30% from the gross untreated impervious area. I think that's what they're saying. And there are multiple ways of saying that, but none of them are what I'm seeing in front of me. So we could say that results in an effective impervious area which is at least 30% less than the existing impervious surfaces. That, I think, sort of says what we're talking about. So, you know, if you guys want to chew on that a bit as well, but that is definitely gonna need a little bit of work. Okay, so looking at number 4 in that same section, so just down a couple inches. "If an asphalt maintenance project requires removing coarse gravel or other materials forming the base under the asphalt, then the asphalt shall be replaced using LID practices, e.g. porous paving." So basically, when they're talking about the coarse grabbles, that's the, you pull off the paving, you pull off the fine stuff, you... you pull off the paving, you pull off the fine stuff, you pull, you're digging now into the base of the driveway, I assume it's a driveway, or tennis court, or whatever we were talking about last time. That we're really digging down into the substructure, the base of this construct. And if we're going to do that, we need to replace it with something that's a little more friendly. That's kind of what I'm getting. But it doesn't mean if I'm going to be pulling off the pavement and maybe touching up the fine gravel and then putting it back on again. That's not what it's saying here, it's talking about coarse stuff.
We're talking about road beds, eh?
Yes, well, not really a road bed necessarily, because none of this is really talking about roads, right? It's talking about individual properties, correct?
Well, this applies, this applies to roads too, in terms of like lake associations or, or, or road associations. I mean, that, you know, where the term doesn't...
But, but the bottom line is, if we're really digging down and really saying, and...
I, I don't really know what you're talking, talking about.
Well, does this, does this apply, and maybe we should look at a lovely invocation clause?
I think we need to just stay, stay on point that this is redevelopment, which, if we're going back to page three from just placing that definition.
Well, it is... For redevelopment sites, yeah.
Transportation related.
Three is, yes, but four not necessarily.
So, four is...
It seems like if it's a complete rebuild of transportation thing.
I'll buy it. So, the redevelopment, you've got to look at that definition of redevelopment. This is commercial-ish. This is, this is not your, your mom and pop homeowner, this is commercial-ish. But we still have to, in, in A, figure out what that means and state it a little better.
Like a multifamily residential, that would be somebody who...
Right, that's the smallest...
You had a road association, that would be a multifamily residential, no?
Yeah, multifamily dwelling is a multifamily dwelling.
That's what a multifamily residential is, one dwelling?
It's one, it's one structure with multiple levels.
Yeah, so that's, that's what you're pretty sure they're referring to.
Okay, so, anyway, I think that's clear enough, that coarse gravel or other materials forming the base. So, I don't know, I, I, I kind of would like to know the meaning of coarse gravel for other materials forming the base. Well, arguably, any of the material under the, the asphalt is somehow forming the base. Right, it's under, it's between gra, the force of gravity and, and the paving.
You think they're repairing the road?
So, I think...
Am I just resurfacing, then, then it's...
Yeah, it sounds like if you're taking the asphalt off, then you're not putting it back on, basically. You're putting something different back on, or porous asphalt, porous...
As long as you didn't disturb your, everything under the asphalt, you could just repave it, you'd be fine.
But I am allowed to say regrade the stuff under the asphalt that I remove and maybe replace some of the light stuff without going into the coarse materials?
Well, as long as you're not removing, there's the word removing in there, so as long as you're not...
Okay.
And that's the word, or other.
Well, that's kind of the problem, or other material.
It's meant, I think it's meant to be inclusive of materials other than coarse gravis that some individual may have placed beneath the existing road.
Or maybe they just put the asphalt on top of it.
It may have not been actually built, so how else would you embrace the notion of?
But if you, clearly, if, if you're going to deconstruct this, this, whatever it is, driveway, road, landing strip, whatever, down sufficiently to get into the coarse gravis, the big stones that are underneath the base, that, that is reconstructing the whole thing. That's clearly what they're talking about here. But what I'm concerned about is the shades of gray, and I think perhaps we should be okay by saying, looking at that word removing. If, in the scenario I propose, would be taking off the paving, you know, which is not part of removing, because it's not the base material, it's the paving, and then we move around and restructure and maybe add to what's underneath, smooth it out, then put the paving on top, we're not invoking this, in my...
Well, it says the asphalt will be replaced. So, in other words, you're not putting asphalt back on, you're going to be using a different material.
Yeah, but, but if I don't go all the way down to the base, I'm not invoking this clause. Because I'm not, I'm not removing coarse gravis.
Just resurfacing, like...
Yeah, if you're resurfacing, then you're not removing the asphalt at all.
But keep in mind, though, that resurfacing in many cases involves taking the lovely little machine, you know, grinding it all up, and maybe taking off at least some significant portion of the surface.
I don't think we trigger this, in that, so...
As long as you're not...
Okay, so, but, but if I, okay. So, conversely, if I've got kind of a beat-up surface and I take, I don't know, a tractor or how, whatever I choose to do, and take the little bucket and go, tuk, 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 and flip it all up and get rid of it for being repaved, do I invoke this clause?
Yes. Does that agree?
Yeah, it sounds like if you're lifting the asphalt, you're not going to be replacing it with asphalt. You're going to be replacing it with a LID practice, porous pavement.
Okay, and what about the fact that you also need to remove coarse gravis or other materials forming the base?
Yeah, I think if you take asphalt off, as long as you don't remove anything else.
Okay, so, so, bottom line is, since, since we've got at least two opinions here, or two possible interpretations...
They want to do with what is required to build a proper porous driveway, or road.
Or driveway in general.
Yeah, because don't they have, they use a different amount, don't they make the bed differently for porous?
You would did so, you couldn't just have something, you know...
It's deeper and it's finer, or something, I don't know, but it's...
Well, and, right, because you're expecting to have stuff flowing through it on a regular basis.
Right.
So, I, I recommend that further examination given to just this, because, and, and, you know, I'm not steering about what it means and what it doesn't mean. Figure out what you want it to mean, and we need to be very clear about what that meaning is. Because I could look at that, you know, looking at this whole document at town meeting, and looking at that one sentence, and saying, eh, that scared it, and throw the whole thing out.
If you've got a big old crumbled parking lot, cracks and broken edges and pop holes in it, if you're, if you're going to improve that, you probably have to take the surface off, because you're removing broken parts and pieces.
Possibly, yeah.
So, you're getting at least down to the, you're not removing coarse grounds, but you're getting down to them.
Possibly. Now, keeping in mind that you've got my understanding of...
Why is the asphalt can't come back?
Well, it can if you don't invoke this clause. If I remove the asphalt, but I'm leaving the fine material, okay? So, when I, when my driveway was paved, I had, you know, coarse gravel, I kept chunking, chunking my shearboils on my snow blower, right? And then, you know, there was something a little finer that was put on top of that, and on top of that was like ground granite, it was like all sparkly in the sun, really fine stuff, and then they put paving on top of that. So, what I'm saying is, if the driveway gets repaired, okay? So, you know, the homeowner's not going to be repairing their driveway every year, or every other year. It's going to be twenty years down the road, and it's going to be a tough shame.
Commercial parking lot, or road.
This is not a residential.
Okay, redevelopment here. Okay, so, what is the expectation for the, the quasi-commercial as according to the definition of the redevelopment? What is the expectation here? If they do the same thing, they have, say, a crumbling parking lot, and they take some front-end loader, and they flip up all the con, the, the...
Asphalt.
The asphalt, and they send it off to be recycled, and they come over here and they say, okay, well, I haven't disturbed any of that stuff, I've still got my light stuff on top, I'm going to, you know, distribute it around a little bit better, maybe fill in a couple of little holes and stuff, make it nice and neat, and then I'm going to pave it again. And I haven't disturbed this, I haven't, I haven't invoked this because I haven't removed coarse gravis or other materials, I've just added to the materials that were there. I've removed the paving, but that's not what this is talking about. So, you know, what is the meaning? We, we certainly don't want a situation where there are going to be a couple of highly paid lawyers arguing about what this means.
May I interject?
Yes.
In yesterday's page, there was an interesting article, it was yesterday, yeah, Monday, September twenty-third, excuse me, on some stormwater management work that the city of Portland is undertaking, which I guess is in keeping with the kinds of things that we learned about from our initial show and tell with the park, what was the name of it?
Park?
Park, yeah. And if, do you get the page?
Not that one, no. I get the cheaper one, that comes in the outside the...
I'll look for a copy of this, because it's kind of shit. Like, basically, what they're doing over a year's time is educating the townspeople about the necessity of, and the obligation to handle their own stormwater if they're, if they're a commercial entity.
They're rewarding people for disconnecting.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Minimizing and disconnecting.
Because of some mandates that are falling out of clean water, I guess, but, it might shed light, if you've got a hold of the article, it might shed a little light on the intent of this thing. It, I don't find it as confusing or misleading as, as you suggested.
Okay, so, what does it mean?
It means that when you have an asphalt maintenance project...
Yep.
That requires removing the coarse gravis or other materials from the base.
Yeah, you're going to quote unquote the asphalt.
It's all, it's all revolved around...
So, should we just say when you're rebuilding a parking area or rebuilding...
Then the asphalt should be replaced using LID practice?
Well, then why if...
Could be clearer.
If, if I'm, if I'm removing, simply removing the asphalt and I'm not removing coarse gravis or other materials forming the base...
Then you're okay.
Right. Then how am I invoking this clause? I could draw a...
You're not invoking it, you're not.
I was humbly suggesting...
I'm not sure.
I think you're the only one who's not sure, because I think it revolves around this removing coarse gravis and forming the base.
And requires.
Yeah, and, and I would say that anytime we don't absolutely, a hundred percent agree on what is meant, then it needs re...
It does need clarification, I guess.
You know, I don't know, I don't know who's right and who's wrong, or whatever, but, but it needs, it needs work to clarify what you intend to say.
All right, okay.
And I don't think we necessarily need to do this anytime in the immediate future, but this is probably going to need to go back to the planning board, the full planning board, you know, will probably come up at, at a workshop with half a dozen or more things that is going to have to go back to the planning board for decision.
I don't know, I think we're supposed to make those decisions here, Paul.
They don't want to, they need to do it, that's why we are here.
It could very well include all the different voices.
Okay, all right.
That's why we have this...
We're going to have to come up with a stairs, I'm pretty sure.
In our newly painted stairs, we, we should... Yeah, okay.
I think that's our responsibility.
So, then, so then you guys will have to figure out, you know, where it's at.
We can ask them, we can bring it up and ask them, but they, it will not be as big up out there.
All I'm saying is, it has to accurately, it has to accurately reflect unambiguously what is intended to be.
Yeah.
So, there is no discussion or argument about what it means.
We want this thing to be straightforward as possible, absolutely.
Yes.
So, if an impervious, previously asphalted parking lot or roadway is being rebuilt, because that's what it seems to be implying, then it's not going to be rebuilt with asphalt, it's going to be rebuilt with the porous pavement. And they might be indicating that you have to get down to the coarse gravis, because to build a porous, proper porous pavement, you need to make a proper bed for it. That's different than a regular asphalt bed.
Okay, which is different from the fine, okay, so now we're talking about removing coarse gravis or other materials. Now, are those other materials the fine material? That's kind of...
Well, you just, you know, government's a good peat and all stuff there, you know, you need to...
Okay, so, we need more words, okay? So, next section, three, one, three, impaired water bodies or high quality waters. I repeatedly see this phrase, high quality water, followed by H W Q.
That's going to be a typo.
Well, it happens multiple times.
What could be high water quality, right?
I don't know, so, which of those two do we reverse? Or do we just choose to be inconsistent in our, in our acronyms? I bet you somewhere in the state documentation, you could find one of those two.
Yeah, in Maine, it's actually called G E A.
Which presumably is not...
A great pond of less than ten acres.
So, somewhere in the state documentation will either probably refer fairly regularly to high quality water or high water quality. I don't know, but I'm presuming that the acronym should fall suit with whatever that phrase is, so that's...
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Yeah, the acronym's right.
On this stuff that is quite frankly all in my head in terms of understanding, the redevelopment citation under three, could we, could we...
You mean three, one, two?
Yeah, three, one, two, three, A, B, C.
Yeah.
Could we see if we could maybe ask, throw that back to, we'd have to raise the issue with the, with the planning board, and seek a, a means by which we could put that back to Forest and say, we need this in layman's terms, because we, we could struggle with that a long time, you know? This, this one in particular, to me, because of, and it's because of the terminology of effective impervious area and that crazy thing about disconnected, is it disconnected impervious?
Well, actually, as you'll recall...
I was saying the disconnection earlier today.
As you'll recall, I think it's worth going back to that definition. Oh, there you go. High quality water is, is diseven in our definitions, H Q W it is.
What were you saying just?
I think it is H Q W, I think, I think that's an easy fix there with the H W Q.
Well, I just, I read a good example on, it was a commercial sheet for another town, but it was talking about, I mean, they made their, their requirement so simple, it was really just a few pages, and it was all about disconnecting. They said the two main areas that you want to disconnect are the roofs and the roadways or driveways, transportation ways. And, for example, if you want to disconnect a roof, you disconnect the gutter so that it, that the water is directed to impervious area where it will, all water coming off that roof will be going to a, a location that will not be part of the network of water that's running off the property. So, each, it's just the zeroing out, it's saying that roof is now zero, it's disconnected, because it's got a pond or something that it's going to.
The term disconnect, disconnected alludes to the fact that it's not part of the onsite?
Well, it could be onsite.
Non-LID management water?
Well, it's referring, they're referring to a network of waterways. A lot of us, you know, the water, water hits our ditches, our ditches run down the road. It is, when you're disconnected, you don't have water going to that network.
Okay, so you might have a driveway or something.
Yeah, or a well, so it's, it's LIDs, it's the use of LIDs to disconnect. So, if, and if a driveway or a pathway is disconnected, it means it's, the water's going to the middle of a hole, the middle of somewhere, and it's not, it's not hooking in with other water that's running somewhere.
So, we may want to modify the, the definition a little bit of the disconnected impervious cover.
Might want to clarify.
Because I, as I mentioned last time...
I had to look it up online, that's what I did.
I was scratching my head on that until I hit section two dot one, three.
Was there, was there a bit of verbiage that, that...
Well, it didn't, I didn't go for the, I didn't find a glossary answer on that, on that sheet.
Well, look on the...
Because it was an informational sheet for Lake St. George or something, somewhere.
Look on the top of page six, probably, the general requirements, disturbances in stormwater management. When I read number three, it clicked what the heck they were talking about with disconnected impervious cover definition. So, I, I think that perhaps we could borrow some of this verbiage and stick it into the disconnected impervious cover.
Help us out, please, with the...
Okay, general requirements, two dot one, all right, in section two, disturbances in stormwater management, bottom of five, top of six.
Yeah.
And then go down to number three. Impervious covers should be disconnected from the stormwater drainage network through such techniques as infiltration, sheath over impervious area, or other approved LID techniques. And, you know, light dawn and marblehead, I looked at that and said, oh, that's what you mean.
And it's like it's a one for one ratio, the roof water goes over there, the driveway water goes over there, zero it out.
So, we're decreasing, you know, the, effectively decreasing the impervious cover. And if you can't get that definition straight, when we're starting to talk nuanced in this section we just talked about, for instance, you know, good luck trying to figure out what they mean. Especially if we don't fix that phrasey all.
Okay, yeah, besides it's some time, I'm...
That would be, that would be a little, see if we can find that, if you're moving around on the, on the web.
Yeah, I just, I had to, it was kind of one of the last things I did.
Okay, redevelopment, um...
Not, just to, just to clarify a little bit.
Yeah.
In my definition of disconnected, I've got a little tentative line proposed.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, if we cross that out...
You're talking about the definition, right?
Yeah, I mean, the glossary that we've been in, it's page two at the top.
Yep. Yep.
So it would read without that, the sum of the areas of impervious cover and pavement that receive runoff. So, like Justin was saying, you'd have your driveway, your house, your tennis court, they wouldn't necessarily be connected, right? And they wouldn't necessarily drain to the same place, and they shouldn't.
Yeah, but now you're defining, now you're defining. Now you're defining impervious cover, not disconnecting impervious cover.
Well, I'm saying those three, three entities are separate. So as long as they don't chino all their water to the same place as it's leaving the site, then they, they would remain disconnected.
Shall we work on that one?
Yeah, it's a good one.
Yeah, and, and, and if you're inclined to do a little homework, and, you know, write out that, the, the ideal definition and we'll bang it around.
Because all they're saying is the sum of the areas of impervious cover. Because they're taking for granted that they are gonna be separated out like the driveway, the roof, and the tennis court. So when you add them all together, that gives you the total.
Yeah, but according to your definition, as I understand it, which admittedly could be not much, you don't need to apply any LID practices in order to call what's left over effective impervious area, and I guess you wouldn't have to.
Well, disconnected impervious area, you don't need an LID to have disconnected impervious area, as long as they don't flow together.
Right.
Or even if they did, they're still separate entities that should be treated separately.
Okay, so now I'm gonna go back to that.
They have to have a place that can contain the water, so long enough for it to, to penetrate down, yeah.
So I really think we should steal that three on page five or whatever, because it makes, it makes a whole lot of sense. So some, some part of that, whatever's making the bell go off in the back of my head, some part of that should go into that definition.
From the stormwater drainage network, yeah.
It, it may be useful to look at our state documents too, because they may have some better verbiage in there.
Gotcha.
Okay, we gotta, gotta hit the hard points, because I.
Alright, so redevelopment, redevelopment, incidental services. Do we agree that we've got incidental and non- incidental, and escalating treatment options for the two?
Yeah.
I noticed on page eight, section three, general design requirements, and I'm now looking at, from there, section three one, section three one one, site design, and then from there, for Baker, talking about existing surface washers. Um, just a point of mention that it does talk about a shoreline district exception, talking about buffer strips, et cetera. So, I'm not quite sure why that exception was made, but we're just sort of taking with that document, the generally approved document and moving it forward.
I think this is in our existing, this is in our existing.
Okay.
I think just.
What do you, I'm kind of.
We're on page eight, um.
And, and it's quite possible, there are one, certain redundancies that ultimately we're gonna try to get rid of, if in fact they don't have greatly different invocation rules. It may be that you need repetition of certain sections of the code just because of where they get invoked. But, for this one, this is talking about the shoreline district, and we may find that this is, is redundant to something in the domain ordinance. Okay, we crossed off New Hampshire's string crossing guidelines on seven. Okay, not bad. We're getting there. Okay, so stormwater managements. So what we're saying is for the stormwater management plan, if an LID plan, so now we've gone from the incidental. Actually, before you get there. Low impact developments. Let's talk about low impact development, section four. Um, I'm bottom of page nine, top of page ten. So this is talking about an incidentally, um, you know, where, I had mentioned before that it'd be good to have the applica, a form of the application. I think if we're specific enough here, and, and it looks like we may well be specific enough about the bullet items of what's being required, that we won't have to go over and above and, and come up with a prototype application, because the application will simply be a formalization of these materials that we're talking about here. Be right.
Looks like that's. The, that's, I'm just thinking you might apply to for two down, toward the modern.
Right, the stormwater management plan for the non-incidentals. So the low impact development plan, again, this, this actually makes this an admirable lot of sense, because it first defines what the low impact, you know, the, the incidental and the non- incidental, then it talks repeatedly about the LID stuff having to do with the incidental and the stormwater management plan having to do with the non- incidental, and it's consistent throughout, so that's good. Um, so, one bone of contention at the public hearing had to do with who could do this. So here, we're talking about the incidental, site planner sketch, incidental disturbance form, um, description, description, name of persons responsible for operation and maintenance, finance, and emergency repairs. Okay, I, in that section, name and signature of qualified professional who prepared the plan. Now, understanding that when I do my taxes, at the bottom of my taxes, it has a section that says the signature and qualifications of the professional who, who prepared this. And it may, the answer may be, no, nobody did, it was just, you know, them not here who did it, okay? So then I wouldn't fill that in.
Right.
So if the intent here is to say, if there was a professional involved, we wanna know who that was. And if there wasn't, that's okay if the homeowner or one of their designated, you know, some designee of the homeowner wants to do it. So here, I would simply say, be clear about whether this is required, or is something that we wanna know if we invoke a professional to do this. We wanna know who that is, but if it isn't a professional, then, you know, the homeowner or their designee can, can do this. And I don't know if that's a fact or not, but I think it was kind of stated all along that, yeah, the homeowner can do this. And, and I think it's gonna be potentially a nightmare for the CEO to try to figure out how much to trust, and not for honesty purposes necessarily, but just for competency and, and, you know, professionally considering all this stuff. And maybe that's just gonna depend on what we end up with.
Yeah, the homeowner might be a professional, that's, you know, I wanted to be able to accommodate for that too.
Sure. But do they need to be, to do this? Do they need to have certain qualifications? I don't know.
For incidental, I would think they have to be, but then when you get to non- incidental.
Okay, so then perhaps we would put another sentence on this that says something like, you know, if it is the homeowner or, or their designee who has submitted this application package, you know, this does not apply. Something like that. Or maybe, maybe I still need to know who did it. You know, who's, who's, who's my friend? You know, who's the friend who did it?
Well, they don't say that on the tax form, they just have it on there.
Well, if, if they, if the IRS doesn't know who's, who I am by now, you know? But still, yeah, basically what I'm saying is, what are the qualifications, you know? What is the intent of whoever's filling out the incidental stuff and submitting this package? What, if any, qualifications do they have? That's all I'm saying.
We, we did chew on this quite a bit, and, and I think this language is a result of, uh, ignoring.
Okay.
Because ultimately, the decision, um, by the phrase, or other town-approved BMP site designer, including YC, SWCD, or other consultant. Ultimately, the decision as to the capabilities of the quote qualified professional who prepared the plan is up to the.
Ken.
Is up to Kenny.
Well, not really.
Well, they have to meet these qualifications.
Right, okay, so the qualifications are cited here.
It's not that, never, it's, I don't think.
Okay, so what it says is, first of all, it implies that it must be some form of qualified professional who prepared the plan. It implies that, doesn't absolutely state it. May include professional engineer, certified professional erosion and sediment control, or other town-approved BMP site designer, including blah blah blah. Then it says, or other consulting, but the implication is that other consultant is town-approved.
That phrase is in common with other ordinances that we read also. They, they all refer to their, that, that phrases.
Okay, and, and what, what it, what happens there, do they mean, yeah, I want a qualified professional? Is that what they mean when they say that?
Yeah. What else does it mean?
Well, it sort of seems to mean what, what occasionally untold it means, which is, yeah, the homeowner can do it.
Well, the homeowner might be a qualified professional.
And then it's not a problem, because they have qualifications.
And the, the.
We're not saying they have to hire someone, but if they have, though, if they have these qualifications, why shouldn't they be able to do it?
They might be able to do it and get it approved, you know, by going in and paying the forty-five dollars an hour to New York County Salt and Water Park, you know, that's the easiest, rather than going to an engineer for two hundred and fifty dollars.
Sure.
That's, that's what they're trying to say, I think.
Okay, so, so some form of elaboration here is probably gonna be. Yeah.
So there does have to be a professional approving it, but not necessarily doing the design, as long as the design is approvable.
Well, did, certified professional erosion sedimentation control, Kenny has taken classes in that.
Preparing the plan, not approved.
He has, right?
Yeah.
So, so depending on the scale of thing, I think Kenny would fall into this.
Yeah, but, but is, but is Ken going to prepare the plan? He's just gonna approve it.
No, he would, he would, he would, he would be the sole.
The homeowner would come in with a driveway, construction guy would come in with a, a drive of the site and with the proposed plan, and Kenny could look at it right away and probably give him some advice, but then in the minimum, they've got an option of going to York County, which is less expensive than actually getting, um, a land consultant.
Again, this is, this might be something that we have to look at, but I, I think that, because I'm, I'm aware of the amount of time that went into crafting this little, couple of lines here, I think it's adequate to its purpose.
But I don't know what it means. So if I don't know what it means, it's not adequate to its purpose.
I would humbly suggest you read it.
Okay, let's do it.
Oh, we just got rid of the word may, you're suggesting.
No, I like the word may.
You do like the word may. Well, that's maybe ambiguous.
So, is it, is it your intent? Is it your intent that a homeowner?
The field is changing, it might be done by a landscaper.
If that a homeowner who is not professional.
One at a time, please, girl.
Sorry, we got two conversations, sorry about that.
Go ahead, Paul.
Alright.
If, is it true, and, and here I'm just, again, trying to clarify intent. A homeowner who is not professionally qualified on stormwater or anything, but has to be a homeowner who has this incidental thing that needs to be complied with, can that homeowner, who, you know, college graduate, you know, uh, on the ball, but not a professional, any of this, can that person, can that homeowner prepare, or if the homeowner happens to have a smart friend, can that person prepare this plan and submit it to the town according to this paragraph?
If, under Kenny's, uh, uh, understanding of, of the qualifications that are necessary to devise a plan that is, that is in keeping with state standards, I would say yes, but he's the one that's gonna adjudicate that, it's not.
He'd have to sign off on that.
He'd have to sign off on it, he'd have to make sure that the individual has either taken some of the courses that are necessary to, um, you know, give you the knowledge to devise the plan and/or has, has a background in education such that, um, he has, he has, uh, uh, knowledge.
Well, yeah, but the, the postulation here is that that's not the case. I'm, I'm, I'm a diligent homeowner, I've got some brains in my head, I'm pretty sure I can do this.
You'll have to talk to Kenny.
But so now we're. I guess I'll, I'll leave this at the moment with just a statement that I, that I, it's, I don't think it's a smart thing to be leaving, leaving, um, documentation that leaves too much interpretation of depending on who the CEO is.
No, I, I hear what you're saying.
Or who the CEO's friend is who's trying to apply for, you know?
It implies that the qualified professional has reviewed it anyway.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely what it's saying, that you need a professional.
It requires somebody qualified to review it anyway, maybe the word shouldn't be prepared.
Prepared or reviewed?
Maybe we should.
I'm much less.
That's a bit worse better.
I think it's much less troublesome to say that. So now we're saying it needs to be some form of qualified professional, but, you know, if you were paying forty bucks an hour, you could maybe say, hey, I've done, this looks good to me, can you take a look at it before I submit it to the town?
Right.
I would think.
That, and now I'm not asking them to put in six hours of work on my behalf and spend two hundred bucks, you know, or two hundred and forty bucks.
Architects, like architects, young architects starting out especially, but architects in general do that all the time. They'll, they'll design the engineering of a roof, and then they give it to the, the structural engineer who's gotta review it and sign off on it.
And the beauty of that, of adding those two words, is it also takes some of the time-consuming impact off of the CEO, because there will be someone of whom he knows, some professionally qualified person, that he knows who that is, that has reviewed it and, and done, you know, that said, this looks good to me, or this doesn't look good to me for this reason, whatever, but then by the time the CEO gets it, it's probably within shooting distance of where it needs to be. Does that make sense?
The phrase, who prepared and/or approved the plan.
Well, the CEO is the one who has to approve it.
Anyone can approve it without looking at it, it should be reviewed. But, I mean, that's just, approval is sort of.
Kenny, you want to approve this?
Yeah.
Approval is, I guess, what I'm trying to.
It's a stamp, you mean a stamp, yeah. But that, I mean, a, a structural engineer would not put his stamp on something without approving it. I mean, without reviewing it, because it's a stamp. So are we asking for a stamp here?
We're, no, I always say that we're probably more asking for someone who puts their professional credentials on the line by, by signing this thing, saying, yeah, I looked at that, and, you know, regardless of whether or not they stamped it, their professional reputation is on the line by, by having anything to do with it.
Who's gonna just sign it, put their.
Right, so, so.
Review or?
Prepared or reviewed, prepared or reviewed. Right, so if they prepared it, why would they need to review it if they already know what it says? And if they did prepare, if the homeowner did all the grunt work, you know, in their diligent capacity, then this professional who is known to the CEO, or will be very soon and repeatedly, will have, will have reviewed it and put their signature on it, so that there's a certain amount of vetting going on here by the time the CEO comes, just by those two words, I think.
Right.
I comment, I'm getting, Virginia just made a comment.
Well, she was doing that, you paid her to do that.
No, I, I made it.
Somebody could pass it, we don't have that capacity.
I will have you know that I have that effect.
I think it's worth looking at, you know.
So, I'm, I'm just writing in here, who, who prepared or reviewed the plan.
That's, that's your proposal.
Not again.
Or reviewed, okay.
So if, if the professional prepared it, they don't have to review it, and they still are gonna sign it.
Yeah.
And if they didn't prepare, then, then the homeowner did, then they're still gonna review it and say, yeah, this looks pretty good, and they're still gonna sign it. And so now we have a qualified professional somehow who has touched this thing, and depending on the homeowner's gumption, this can either be, you know, cost intensive to the homeowner if they don't wanna do any of the work, or it can be fairly straightforward, you know. or it can be fairly straightforward, you know, quick. Yeah, I took a look at it, you know, you gave it to me yesterday, I took a look at it, it looks all pretty good. I'm gonna sign off on it. Goes to the CEO. I think.
That sounds good, because we are dealing with projects of various scales, so.
Now, the other option is to just say, you know, strike that. And we don't need any of that for incidental. You know, you submit paperwork to the CEO?
No.
It is what it is.
Yeah, because a certified professional erosion and sediment control is gonna be a construction guy too.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be somebody whose sole job is doing this. They can just have the qualifications to review it and make good sense of it.
Take the little class that Tom and I took. Then you become a certified professional erosion and sediment.
Sure, sure. And as long as you have the credentials and you're willing to put your signature on it, then you should be good. Okay, so going to the stormwater management plan.
We do really have to wrap this up.
Okay, well, you can wrap wherever you want, Mr. Chairman.
We'll go one more.
Yeah, one more. It's basically the same question. With stormwater management. Four, two, can you just keep falling down?
E. E, you're right.
So now we're talking about non- incidental. We're talking about the stormwater plan, it's a little more intensive. Chances are, it's gonna be a larger project, it's gonna be probably more professionals already involved.
That's pretty clear what it says.
And that says, "name and signature of licensed professional engineer who prepared the plan." So, no homeowner here.
No homeowner here, unless he's a licensed professional engineer.
You'll soil the water in there. Now, there may in the future be more titles of the licensed professional because it's an increasing field.
Sure.
But, yeah, I mean, this is a project, these are big projects.
Yep. So, believe it or not, I don't have any stones to throw at that.
Okay.
I mean, it's clear. It's very clear. Other than, you know, maybe, gee, am I an engineer if I have this qualification? Am I an engineer if I have that? But usually the word engineer in a professional setting has a specific meaning. And that person knows whether they're an engineer or not.
Yeah, they have a, they have a special, they take the exam.
On a closing note, is there anything you want us to be looking at the way?
Yes. For homework, if you choose to accept it, I would like to, I'd like you to look at section one dot three, and this is on the bottom of page three for me. So, one dot three, one dot four. And we're only talking about one five one, where it talks about the level of disturbance, and the one five two, where it talks about the level of disturbance.
Thanks, page again, please.
Okay, so, one, three, on page three, applicability.
Yeah.
Okay, talking about the zones. And references levels of disturbance in one five, that's why we're looking at those. And two, you'll recall the discussion we had about whether two was really supposed to go through the rest of this or just go.
Right.
Okay? And I guess if I'm just to do this, I kind of have to know on two. What was the ultimate decision there? Is two supposed to flow through everything? Or is it just supposed to go? No?
We were gonna do some rewording, I think, is what we decided.
Yeah.
But you know what, I was tuned about it last week. And it might just be simple enough in that section to bore people right up front that there's incidental and non- incidental. Like, include that in one, of applicability. Implice that there's gonna be non- incidental or incidental disturbances that they're gonna be having to compare their project to. You know, put the wording in right up front, and then we won't need two at all, but.
Well, what I'm thinking with one five one and one five two is conceivably those definitions could actually be moved up to applicability so it's all in one shot. I have all my applicability right here. And then I have my exclusions. And then, and then you can say, you know, incidental disturbance as defined in section one, three above, you know, blah blah blah. So, you can, you can have the code here, reference it down there instead of the other way around. And then we're not jumping all over the place before we figure out whether we're gonna fall into this thing.
Right.
So, anyway, that's.
Somehow sneak those words right into the meaning of it.
Yes, yes. And not, and not have to duplicate them down below. So, one place to have. So, one, three, one, four, and like, one, five, one, five, one.
Thanks, what's the, what's the issue with one, four, and one, five?
Well, the applicability, the exclusions, the applicability was kind of problematic about, because of two, I think.
Right.
The exclusions, I think, are reasonable the way they are. So, that would probably just be included as, you know, everybody would have the same stuff in the middle there because I don't think there's any argument about that. But the one, five, one, as you already know, that was rewritten slightly with that "and" moved down. But I think we could somehow craft those incidental disturbances and the non- incidental disturbance square footage and the hundred-square-feet stuff could be moved up to applicability and defined, saying, you know, shall we, you know, is defined as an incidental disturbance, defined as a non- incidental disturbance. And then it falls down, you know exactly what you're talking about.
You can say all projects over a hundred, the disturbance of over a hundred square feet are gonna fall into one of two categories.
So. Well, then you'll come back with exactly the way it's written. And then what you're talking about.
So, you just don't look at the simplicity.
Right. Because that was very definitely a trouble spot during the spring review of when this thing comes in. Right now, it's better than it was because it doesn't have that table of the applicability table and all that stuff. Yeah, so it's better. But I think it still needs work, in my opinion, I believe.
Right.
Okay, so if we all kind of come to the table with, let's see if this looks, you know, if we're lucky, we'll have one version that everybody will say, eh, that looks pretty good. And then we can sort of agree that that is not, that is more reflective of the meaning and it's more condensed, it's in one place, and it's very easy to use this document in the future. You know, it'll just be, here's my applicability, here's where I come in, and then here's my exclusions, where I'm gonna bop back out of it. And then the rest of it is just, you know, you know you're gonna do the rest of it or you're not. Depending whether or not you, you end up, you know, more applicability than exclusions.
Thank you, Charlie. My next meeting is on October fifteenth. Uh, two fifteenth. And so we'll work on the, those points of, we'll find it, and.
In seven o'clock?
Yes. And.
Is that two again?
If we all, can we all have them? Some of these things, it might be good to drive a few of some of our state manuals and just see how, they may or may not. Well, similar language.
I think that's gonna come up naturally as well because we're still have to talk about those citations. So, we're gonna have to come up with what parts of those documents we're citing, have supporting materials that elaborate further on what we're talking about here, that support it, that keep us from having to put, you know, a couple dozen more pages on here that's already done. And theoretically, we'll run across where some of our language comes from.
We have, we have a meeting, a regular plane board meeting next Thursday. Thursday of next week. And I'll run it by Chip as to the more technical one in that redevelopment section, how we might get some feedback from the author there. Or something.
So, there, so there's at least one section that is really unclear about what the underlying thought was.
I thought it ought to be translated better into Latin language.
Yeah, it's kind of open to interpretation right now.
Redevelopment. Maybe we can get Brendan to.
Oh, you mean the definition of redevelopment?
Nope.
Oh, that's thirty percent impervious business?
Yeah. Yeah, correct.